We'll call the meeting to order at 7:01. Rise for the important gentleman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Susie Wool, please.
Councilmember Groves? Here, Logan, Ohio.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here, Lowell, Michigan.
Councilmember Salzio?
Here.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer?
I'm here. Before we approve the agenda, I'd like to add, under the new business, item C, Kent County you fair extension that Mike and I would do.
There would be item I.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think. Yep, okay, item I.
What? Oh, yeah, I see what that works.
Okay, item I.
With that, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with a change.
I'll support that.
Motion and a support. Any other discussion or changes? Sue.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzio?
Yes.
Councilmember Jankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes. All right, citizen commentary is not on the agenda.
We do have one thing directed right at two.
Perry Beecham, who resides at 924 Riverside Drive, just wanted to thank the council for having coffee with council this last Saturday. There's a lot of great discussions that were going on. I wanted to give another opinion. I respect the young lady that was up here at the last meeting talking about the cannabis shops in Lowell. There's certainly been talk like there's too many, whatever. I disagree with that. I think it's filling spots on Main Street, providing revenue. I've never partake with marijuana, never planned to, so you're not talking about a user that wants to have more access. I haven't, when the city was first talking about it, the concerns were all gun-toting people and that just wouldn't be attractive to the city. Well, what I've seen, the buildings, everything are very attractive, creates revenue, and pardon the pun, but, you know, if there's so many that at some point, they'll, some might fall by the wayside. So I just, from a different perspective, I just think it's a good thing, and I applaud the city council for approving it because the citizens of Lowell went to the state voting for recreational marijuana, approved, you know, I think it was like sixty, forty percent approved. So I've always been taught that as a representative, you're supposed to do what your constituents want you to do, and I applaud you for that. So just wanted to give a different perspective. I do think, I think that it is much of the same as alcohol, except for the social zone that you have now, but, you know, you have to consume on private property or in an establishment. Pretty much the same to marijuana use. It needs to be done privately. It's not open. And this is where I differ with the city, that having restrictions of what time, you know, that they have to close by nine o'clock. Again, I view it as the same as alcohol, and you're not closing the bars at nine o'clock or selling alcohol. So I think it should have the same hourly, and I know that's coming up on Sunday later. So just, again, another opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Barry. Anybody else? Right, yeah, Susie.
I received this letter through email from Todd Shaw. We recently received this letter informing us the address of fifteen condominiums and project was arbitrarily changed. The chaos this creates is incredible, to say the least. The hassle associated with changing information tied to a credit card is significant, and this is many more times. It requires letting many parties know if the address change affects condominium documents that have been recorded, and I was told by the local post office, a lender looking to provide financing for a prospective buyer of the River View Flats condo called the city for information. I was told there was no 219 High Street. The lender then called the post office to figure out what was going on and was informed of the situation. The attached letter states, "At present, the condominiums are accessed via King Street, therefore are assigned to 20 King Street." The simple reality is the property also still has High Street access, which in fact is where our development signage is and has been since last fall. Further, the development has two areas of access, which is nothing new and has had the High Street address for over a hundred years. Emergency vehicles can access the property from either access point, and there is no reason for an address change. Further, it was a bit offensive to receive a letter informing us our address has changed without the opportunity of any input from us. I understand the boiler apartment project had similar experience. I've done many projects in many places and never experienced anything like this before. We respectfully request the city change the address back, which can be done as easily as it was changed, and we can put this all behind us.
We're gonna have Jeff Rashid, the assessor. He's out with that surgery right now. Come to the next meeting and explain the reasoning and the logic behind it, and then we can discuss it. I don't, I don't understand it, but my house is the same way. My driveway is on Lincoln Light, but I have an Elm Street address, so. I don't know how that works, but Jeff does. He could be here tonight because of his back surgery.
My house has two street addresses, one on Monroe and one on King.
The apartment has one?
You gotta make a list for property taxes.
We have two driveways?
Yeah, and if you put it in, like in Google Maps, it'll take you to Richard Spark, and if you put it in Apple Maps, it'll take you right to my driveway. So I don't understand it either, but I didn't even thought on it, and I'm gonna meet with Rita, who's one of the tenants there, because she's having a problem getting some stuff changed, too. So then we can have Jeff explain it to us. And I haven't talked to Brett Sligle about it, so I don't know what his address change is at all. The first I heard, but listen to me. Good?
Yep.
Okay, that's it, Susie? Just the one. Okay. Full business, Mike, number A, redistricting.
Yes. Good evening, mayor, city council. Edward Wolf from the state of Michigan, redistricting commission is here. He's gonna give a quick update as to what is going on at the state level regarding, regarding the 2020 ballot initiative. Edward, take it away.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. I'm grateful to be here, Mayor DeBoer, members of the city commission of Lowell, and just wanna thank everyone for just making this opportunity possible. And we'll go ahead and thank Michael Burns, your city manager, for coordinating everything for tonight. This is just a real brief presentation to talk a little bit about the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission, and just give you just a brief history. In 2018, Michigan voters passed proposal two, a valid initiative, for voters and not legislators to take responsibility for independent redistricting and created the MICRC, known as the Michigan Independent Citizens Redistricting Commission. It's comprised of thirteen randomly selected Michigan residents that includes four Democrats, five independents, and four Republicans. The MICRC is responsible for Michigan congressional, house, and senate districts. As you know, we have fourteen congressional districts here in Michigan. It is expected, unfortunately, that we might lose a seat, and so we would be down to thirteen. As you know, our Michigan House has a hundred and ten seats, and our Michigan Senate has thirty-eight seats. So we're responsible, the MICRC, the commission's responsible for drawing those district lines. To ensure fair and impartial maps, the MICRC is required to solicit public input before drawing any redistricting plan for the Michigan congressional, house, and senate districts through a minimum of ten public hearings across the state. We're gonna actually do sixteen public hearings across the state during the month of May and ending, actually, July 1. We will be in Grand Rapids, July 1. The last one will take place in Grand Rapids. Just so you have an idea, we're gonna be doing two a week starting May 11. The purposes for the public hearings are as follows: inform the public about the redistricting process, share the purpose and responsibilities of the commission, solicit information from the public about potential redistricting plans, once again, for the Michigan congressional, house, and senate districts. We welcome your ideas as members of the commission, as well as the ideas of your residents to increase awareness and engagement in Michigan's redistricting process. You can email the ideas at redistricted@michigan.gov. You can mail them at MICRC, P O Box 30318, Lansing, Michigan 48909, or you can share them at our weekly meetings on Thursday or at one of our upcoming public hearings. Want to invite you, that if you wanna learn more information about the MICRC or the upcoming public hearings, to please visit our website at michigan.gov/MICRC. I want to thank you so much for the opportunity to speak before the commission, and if there's any questions, I can take them at this time, but I want to make sure I stay within my time limit.
Edward Jim Salz, we'll add one question. When are you looking to have this proposed, before the next presidential election, before this November election? When are you looking to have this all certified for the rezoning of these districts?
I'm sorry, I was kind of saying, so I didn't hear your whole question. Are you asking why are we doing the redistricting?
Yeah, no, what is the timeline? When do you look at having this proposed, the changes for the next election, or is it the presidential?
Right. The timeline would be in time for the 2022 election. As you know, that we have a challenge with regards to the census data being delayed with regards to that, and so the commission has petitioned the Michigan Supreme Court for relief to adjust those timelines. And so right now, we're just focused on what we can control, and that's to get input from Michigan residents with regards to the redistricting process and hearing some of their ideas and plans, not just for the congressional, because everyone's pumped about the congressional, but let's not forget the House and the Senate as well.
I'm assuming the reason we might lose a district is because of population shift? Is that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me. If there's anything I can do to help, please don't feel free to reach out.
All right, my COVID-19 updates.
Yes, two items. The first item is reopening of City Hall. All of our employees should be, who want the vaccination in City Hall, should be able to have their vaccination by May 3, which is the date I'm planning to reopen. A number of our employees are in the process of getting their vaccinations right now. Also, but if by chance everyone gets it ahead of time, we'll open ahead of time, which is gonna be dependent on when the type, when the people get their vaccination as to when we'll open. The other issue that's, well, the other issue that's come up was with public meetings. We, Kent County has declared a state of emergency until June 30, which allows us to do this hybrid Zoom virtual in-person option. One of the, one of the issues they also came about in the last week is they did change the indoor gathering requirements for open meetings. In essence, what it allows now is you can have fifty percent of your capacity, your normal fire capacity, is what your, what your, what, the amount of people can be in the room for a public meeting. So for us, this room, the fire code has us at a hundred people. It technically would say that would mean fifty people could participate. However, one of the requirements is, is you still have to have all the social distancing in place, the six, the six feet apart, all that stuff, and by doing that, we can only have thirty-eight people in here. So we, but, you know, with the Zoom option, it doesn't allow us a little bit more flexibility for the next couple of months. But I, I don't foresee anything, you know, I don't foresee us going back to full Zoom anytime soon. I think we probably can at least do this option for now, and then adjust as necessary. One other issue to talk about, we might wanna start thinking about, the water shut-off moratorium hasn't ended. The governor has ended it. I know a number of cities are already starting the process with shut-offs. They're, they're gonna start shutting them off this month. I don't know how the council feels about that, if they want to, if you wanna start charging late fees, say after the May billing cycle, or shut-offs after the May billing cycle, that's an option. If you wanna, if you wanna delay it, that's fine, too. But the, the, the moratoriums are not in place at the moment, and right now, I believe we have about ten accounts that would be in shut-off mode, and, and normal amount of people who would be late fee, normally would be charging late fees. It really hasn't changed throughout the, throughout the time period. So I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, it's warm, and there have been three rounds now of stimulus payments, and nobody seems to really be taking advantage of us. You know, if there's only ten, isn't that about a normal number for a billing cycle? So if you go back to completely norm, and then we got all the double payment, or double billing things rectified by posting those payments, so I would think by May, we should be ready to go back to business as usual. Wouldn't you? I mean, it's not, it's not any different, really, than what we're doing now, because nobody's using, you know, taken advantage of.
Right, it's been relative, yeah. Really hasn't been, maybe it speaks well for people of Lowell.
Yeah, it really does. Yeah. So now, you still, these people want this. They haven't been, you know, lived it along.
Well, for that small group, I would look at putting some notice in there.
Yeah, yep.
Hey, you know, we, we're not, maybe not listening to this tonight or anything else, but at least put it in there.
Yeah, put it in their bill, maybe have to put it in the newsletter, so when they get their next bill, is they ever back to normal?
Yeah.
Good?
Yep.
Leah? Good?
I'm good with that, yep.
All right, showboat updates, Michael, yeah.
My only update is with the restrooms. As you, as you know, we received a little bid of $367,000 just for the bathroom. I have gone back to both bidders, and since they are both design-built companies, they can, they have the ability to make their own architectural drawings. So basically, what I told both entities was, come back to, come back to us with building us a ba, building us two bathrooms, with the ability to be able to add on the items that we, that we need in the future if we need to, and make sure that the, the mechanical, electric, and the, and the plumbing is all in place, and see how much you can get it down. I really don't wanna go back to our architect that we have now and pay them more money to value engineer it. I think this can be done a lot cheaper by just going directly to the, to the, to the both bidders and gives them both a fair opportunity to try and, try and rectify this matter. I've given them about three, four weeks to, to get this in order, and I've talked to both of them, and they're working on it as we speak.
Yeah, I, I looked long and hard at it, because I used to be in the trades. Cost of lumber right now, I think, is the biggest, biggest driver over there. I might suggest that these contractors look at possibly just putting a mason block wall up, and call that good for now. It's a lot, lot cheaper. It'll help in the long run to achieve our end goal of at least getting them done.
I've been asked by a citizen there, there could be potential other contractors, are we restricted at this point to just the two that put in a bid, or would we open and entertain a potential, another bid scenario where they could come in, design bid as well?
I guess you can do whatever you want. I, I think the fairest, they didn't submit a bid the first time.
That is correct.
And, and as far as I'm concerned, I think it need to be fair to the people who bid. Everyone was given the opportunity to bid this. And I find it, I have a hard time telling a lot, you know, the people who played by their rules and did it the way we ask to allow other people into the process at this point.
Well, I will agree to disagree, because I've been on that other footwork. I've been a successful bidder, and yet, or at least betted, and they turned around and changed the scope and redesigned and put it up to re-bid, and, you know, you get, you get a lot of other, other people coming, coming through. So I just wanna make sure we, you know, I don't have a problem getting something from those two, and if it's reasonable, but I, but I did, but I haven't asked by another person in town to be considered for that, just for that one.
Anything else on the showboat?
Yeah, we had our fundraising committee. I think we have our last one coming on up at the end of the month. We are $40,000 away from obtaining the overall goal that was set. I know right now there is one last push for another brick campaign, and I forget who's gonna match the seven, up the $7,500.
Oh, it was federal credit.
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna match up to that, so that part of it. So that's good news, and, and then I know in June, there will be a gala, it will be on June 11 for the people that donated, and then the following day, which is, I think, the expo, the showboat will reopen to the public for that day. So there's a lot of good things happening. The 501(c)(3) committee is, is, is getting launched on that part of it, and so it's gonna continue, and hopefully Dan can be at the next one. We're talking about maintenance, you know, as we, we brought that up, and so we need to get some numbers rolling with that.
How long is that screening, is it?
Yeah.
April 20th, right?
Twenty first.
April 20th.
Wednesday, the 21st.
April 20th is the brick, the end of the brick.
End of the brick, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so.
Okay, anything else?
Hope it's in there, yeah.
Monroe Street and Washington Street updates. Dan?
No, I'm gonna stand here because I'm getting blamed over there. I was asked to give a, another update on the Monroe and Washington Street projects because the next council meeting, we're gonna be talking about the financing end of it and getting approvals for going back to USDA RD loans for the project. So just to give you an update of where we're at today, again, back in October, we received an overview of the Monroe Street, Washington Street infrastructure projects. At the time of the overview, the project needs and cost data we had available to us was based on information obtained during Sawgrass Project that took place in 2015 to 2019, plus previous water review data. In the past four months, we have been reviewing information, preparing the USDA preliminary engineering report, and developing an infrastructure replacement plan to provide the community with the necessary improvements that we anticipate lasting for fifty or more years. In discussions with USDA, they indicated that we should be sure to include all the anticipated work in the loan application for each street, as once the loan is made, it's very difficult to add funds if additional work comes up during the construction. Because of this, we are trying to anticipate all our infrastructure needs on both these projects. For Monroe Street, the original work anticipated reconstruction of the street from the south end to the north end, and then included installation of new water main from Kent to Main and from Avery to Fremont. The proposed sanitary sewer work with replacement of the sewer line from King to Sherman and Front to just south of Main. From our review of the existing infrastructure, we are now proposing to replace the water line in the alley behind the stores, install a water main on Kent Street from Monroe to Washington, install water main on Washington Street between Lafayette and Washington, and be prepared to replace galvanized water services as required by the current State of Michigan lead and copper rules. We are uncertain on how many water services may be total replacement, so we are planning for the worst and hoping for the best. We are now anticipating replacement of all the sanitary sewer from Avery to Fremont to provide an entirely new system in that area. We are also looking at the storm sewer and considering replacement for that, as we expect all the other underground work to displace much of the existing old storm sewer pipes. Additional paving work has been added for Kent Street and King Street. The updated project cost for Monroe Street is now estimated to be $3,841,000. Washington Street, the original project, anticipated reconstruction of the street from Washington at the, from the south end to Front Street to the north end at Fremont, and this included new water main from Front to Main and from Main to Grant, and that proposed sanitary sewer was replacement from Avery to Grant. As we continue to review the existing infrastructure, we are proposing to replace the water main from Main to Fremont Street, and also to make the water main connections with the new pipes at Kent and King from the work that's done when we do Monroe Street. And then we're also, again, preparing for replacement of galvanized water services. The sanitary sewer work is now anticipating the replacement of the entire sewer from Avery to Fremont Street, and all this existing storm sewer pipe is being considered for replacement as well, again, because of the work for water and sanitary sewers beneath the storm sewer that's all gonna be displaced when the construction, most of it should be displaced when we do the construction work. We, at this time, we're also looking at additional paving of the one-block lengths of streets that connect Washington to Monroe, such as Sherman, Grant, North End High. Paved Monroe Street, this, 22, Washington and 23, we're thinking if we get all those connectors, then that whole area is done. The updated project cost for Washington Street is now estimated to be $3,512,000.
Thank you, Dan.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You said that you're gonna shoot a little high, which makes sense, because you can't reapply.
Right.
If we shoot high and don't spend that much, do we just pay that balance down, or can we use it for?
I think Jessica.
I can address that.
Okay.
Dan, I, I have a question. When you say you do connector streets, are you gonna stop then at Washington? Are you gonna take that all the way up to Jackson Street, the connector streets? So you're talking approximately two blocks.
At this moment, now, we're just looking at from Monroe to Washington. But looking over with, the next street, Jackson, I already paved.
Jefferson.
There's another, there's another block there that we should be looking at doing, but we have to look at how much money we have, because that all comes out of our own markets. That doesn't come out of the law.
That section could be done when we do the Washington section, right?
Yeah. What, my anticipation is, when we do Washington, we do all that leftover paving at that time, not when we do the.
What I'm looking at doing from a finance and paying for that is, obviously, we're in the budget this year and next, we're, we're budgeting for Gene Allen and Amity to be done. That's gonna, our local street, I'm doing enough, a number of finagling to try and get these projects done, but that's gonna get our local street fund, and I'm actually gonna be putting, planning to put more general fund dollars into the budget, into the local streets this year, but it's really gonna drain it. So it's gonna be a year, I think, I think it's gonna take two years to be able to just pay for those, all those cross streets for the one block. So it's gonna be, so you, you're gonna see this road project in 2022, but you probably won't see any other streets in 2022, so we can save up enough money to be able to do the crosses in 2023.
Yeah, I think some of the, that, that I'm running crosses, talking to people more, we talk about that, and we talk about the connector streets. They think it's gonna go from Jack's, Jackson Street all the way down, and I think we need to make sure that they're educated that that's not gonna happen.
Right. If, if we could swing it, if.
I'm just saying it a hundred percent.
You have to do it, but.
I don't know if we're being.
And are we, we, we talked, you gave a good presentation on how to keep a road good for extended period, and we've been talking about doing chip sealing, especially on Jackson there. Or, yeah, it's Jackson.
You would want to chip seal Jackson.
No, that is, that is really bad.
That's a reconstruct.
Jefferson?
Or not Jefferson, Jefferson.
Jefferson, you probably could do some microsealing.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some time coming up soon, I believe, within a year, that there has to be some preventative maintenance done on, on Jefferson, the cube bay.
I just wondered when, when those dollars, when you look. I just wondered when, when those dollars, when are you looking at doing those or haven't you gotten that far? Haven't gotten that far yet. Trying to get these big projects in and see where we sit with these other smaller ones. Like you're saying, we're, we're doing projects this year and to plead our dollars, hopefully in two years we'll have enough saved up to do these cross ones if anything else that we might have come up.
Another question that a couple of people asked me as I was walking around too. When you're replacing the sewer, are you then replacing the old clay tiles that go from under the street to the, to the customer's hookup that runs back in there? Or are you just replacing, say, the hookup on the sewer lines when it comes out from the person's property?
We are looking at, we need to do as much as we can stand on public property. So we're going to replace the sewer lido from the main to the sidewalk property line area.
Okay.
One of the issues we end up, and it'll come up in our next discussion here is, is when, because we're using, uh, state money for our project here, if we go outside of the right of way, there's a lot of paperwork that we need to fill out with the property owners to give us permission to go on their property, even though it repairs for them. So that's something that we need to make sure is addressed as well. And it could get costly if we're not careful.
Because I, I know on, on the review of my house, there, there's quite a bit of clay tile that needs to be replaced down the road. And if you were coming by and then opening up the ground and I didn't have to pay for that, I probably would offset some of that out of my own pocket and pay that to get it. So I don't have that issue two months after you repave and there goes my clay tile and I'm digging up the street to replace.
Well, the work, the work in the right of way will all be new.
Right, yeah.
So it'd just be from the property line to your home, that would be that for you.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
And the same with water services, our, our plan is right now, replace it from the main to the shut-off box. But again, if it's galvanized pipe, we're going to have to go all the way to the house and that's not covered by USDA. And that's something that we still need to work out with, uh, with the engineers and how we have to do the easements for those as well since it's a, uh, state-funded project as well.
That's all I had.
That's good. Yeah, I was going to have Dan do the Monroe Street design first.
Oh, he actually.
Yeah, that one, that show.
I'm going to design that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, in order to continue moving the Monroe Street project forward, we need to get the design engineering plans developed. These plans take into account all the different facets of the construction work, as well as specification documentation, design protocols that are required for the different entities that we will be utilizing for financial support of the project. It's, uh, it's a puzzle. Uh, from careful review and investigation of the existing infrastructure, the original project of water main and sanitary replacements on portions of Monroe Street is grown as I've just said. And then, uh, again, we need to replace more water main and, and make sure we have our water services covered according to the Michigan lead and copper rules, plus increasing sanitary and sewer work. Williamson Works has prepared a proposal for the design engineering work. It lays out the proposed project, the funding sources and the scope of services to provide the necessary documentation to meet USDA RD requirements, as well as the needed documentation to present the project for bid letting through MDOT. Their work includes continued review of the existing infrastructure, design of all the new water mains, sanitary sewers, storm sewers and streets, geotechnical investigations, obtaining necessary approvals from the state historical preservation office, obtain environmental clearance to meet the National Environmental Policy Act, preliminary plan reviews with MDOT, that's all the necessary permit documentation, applications. Uh, right of way easement acquisition assistance for any areas we need permanent or temporary easements. MDOT grade inspection meetings, including the necessary programming applications and special provision specifications development, final plans, documentations for bidding and bidding assistance. Williamson Works proposes performing all this work for a fee not to exceed one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. In order to meet MDOT scheduling requirements for grade inspections, the design needs to be completed and an inspection scheduled by mid-July. This would allow for early 2022 bid letting through MDOT and construction commencing as soon as possible in the spring of 2022. This project is expected to take the entire 2022 construction season to complete. So then in 2023, we are anticipating performing similar work on Washington Street. Williamson work already completed by Williamson Works for the USDA grant application, including the preliminary engineering report and the topographic survey of Monroe Street will also be utilized as the, as they complete the design work. Also, this design engineering work will be incorporated into the USDA agreement as part of the loan we are looking, working to receive so that through the loan, this one hundred and ninety thousand dollars will be funded through. It's my recommendation that low city council approves of the Monroe Street design engineering services. Scope of services with Williamson Works is outlined in their letter dated March 31. And the amount to, not to exceed one hundred and ninety thousand dollars, authorize the mayor to sign any necessary documents.
Questions for Dan?
Um, I don't know if the hundred and ninety thousand is a good price or not. I'm going to put the faith in, in Williamson Works that they've done this before and they have given us a fair market value for the services they're going to perform.
If, going by their, their estimate that we have right now, which was utilized in their preliminary engineering work with USDA, that hundred and ninety is just under five percent, which is typical construction engineering. Because I had the same, the same thought, like, well, that's a lot of money. But when you look at in the scope of the project, five percent, that, that's about average for, for the state. Just, and just to give you an idea, because this will come up later, when we do the project, we're going to need engineering, construction engineering services out there. That runs anywhere between ten and seventeen percent of, of a construction project. So when we come back with that big number.
Yeah, hopefully they don't touch a thorough job when they get over to Washington. It's, hey, it's a repeat, it's less or whatever.
Because there's still design work.
Yep.
All, only the, the biggest difference between that job and this one, I mean, Monroe Washington's, we don't have MDOT dollars for Washington Street. So we don't have to follow the MDOT bid letting and specification procedures for, for the project. The work is close, but it's, we don't have to do all that extra technical stuff like is required for MDOT projects.
Any other questions for Dan? A lot of value in Williamson Works anyways. Motion to approve the Monroe Street design engineering.
I make that motion.
I'll support. Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeWort?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzmann?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
And Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Dan. Jessica?
Hello, we thought it might be a good idea to, um, just sort of refresh your memory as to the, the bonding part of all of this. So, um, I've, I've given you an example, which I think you've seen before, of an index that sort of outlines the process from a legal standpoint. So after the engineers have sort of done all of their homework and are ready to get started, um, that's when you start the legal process as well. And you can begin with a notice of intent resolution, which is the very first thing that you're going to see, um, likely at a very, meeting very soon with us, right Mike? I think that was the plan. And just so you know, um, you can go ahead and start this notice, um, of intent procedure. It doesn't lock you into anything. All it does is get that notice in the paper and let that time period begin to run. So that's a forty-five day referendum period where, um, and honestly, it rarely happens, not my wood. But, um, if there were to be a petition signed by not less than ten percent or fifteen thousand of your registered voters within the city, um, then the issue of bonding would have to go to a vote within the entire city. That very, very rarely happens, but that is a requirement under Act 34, the revised municipal bonding deck. So it's one of the very.
Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen thousand. Or ten percent, whichever.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yep, yep. So that's, sorry, that's just the statutory language, so I'm just spitting it out there. But, um, anyways, you get this published and you will have to publish notices of intent for each bond. And I think, um, it's, we've discussed several different financing structures, but I believe there'll be, um, two from USDA, two loans, one water, one sewer, and then possibly a general application bond. So you get your notices, uh, published in your paper and let that forty-five days start to run. So that would be our plan. And we would insert a not to exceed amount in there. And then of course, that doesn't mean you have to borrow up to that amount, but you kind of tend to aim high and then because you don't want to have to go back, you can't borrow more than what you've published in the notice of referendum. So, um, we round up a little bit, get that in the paper and let that clock start to run. And then if you go down this index, you'll see that, you know, we have to confirm that you have qualified status from treasury, which of course you do because you're in good standing. Um, and it, well, it have the plans much more concretely in place before we would pass the actual bond resolution, which is number, number five here, so. Um, and that's the resolution that sets forth all of the details for the project, and the repayment method and all of that, so. And the rest of these are just sort of, uh, really sort of, you know, the bureaucratic paperwork that rural development requires. There's a little bit more paperwork required with rural development, but as I think we've discussed before, there are also numerous benefits from going that way. Um, you can borrow for a longer period of time, very low interest rates. And the best thing is that you can prepay at any time, no penalty. So, um, it's sort of worth it to jump through the hoops with this extra paperwork. So, so we would like to go ahead and get, once we have the, the structure sort of decided upon, get that, um, rate of referendum published. So that would be our goal at the next meeting. Does anybody have any questions about that? And it does not lock you in for what it's worth. You can publish a notice of rate of referendum and never issue bonds, um, just let it fade away, so.
Mike, just to, to make, we're sure this, this is the only way that we can get this done today, by going this route. We looked at all other options to come up with the funding to repair these streets.
I mean, we could significantly raise water and sewer rates to do it. You could, I mean, that is an option.
We've looked at that.
Oh, yeah. But you would have to look, you're, you're, you're looking at a probably hundred percent increase. If not more. And, um, the other, the other option is, is I mean, you could, you could go the traditional bonding route, which is a twenty to thirty year, but you're going to be paying more. You're going to be paying more, which is, it's going to be reflected in the rates. This is, this is spread out over a longer period of time. It's the least, it's the least minimal impact to the rate structure to, to do it at this point. But you're getting forty years of, of, to pay back on not even maybe two percent interest. I mean, that's, you're never going to get cheaper money than that.
And it really pays back without.
Correct. And if we, if something happens and we end up paying it off, we can pay it off.
I just don't want anybody, maybe they're listening to me and now they're going to hear this later and say, well, what else have you guys done? And I think we've done every route possible we've been at. And I, I honestly believe this is the right way to go.
And, and really, this is probably the only project in the city where you can address all your needs, your waters, your water needs, your sewer needs and your street needs. There's, and you can use these funds towards, towards most of your street costs. So it, this is the only, I mean, this, we're, we're looking at a mile and a half of street that is going to be, and we have twenty miles of road. I mean, this is a significant amount of our, of our, just these two streets is a significant amount of our road network. That's, you know, it's going to be fixed, but, but the more important thing is the infrastructure underneath is going to be fixed. We're not, you know, the worst thing you can do is, is put a poor road in and the next thing you know, rip it out because you got to fix the underground infrastructure. So we're, I think this is the best option, mine from what I, everything I've researched on it, for us to take care of this large of a project.
I think that's, on that note, it's worth mentioning again that we have a big influx of storm water that's hitting our plant that we will eliminate by doing this.
Correct.
Right?
This will, this, this along with Forman will, which will be later this summer, this will be, these will be, uh, addressed a significant amount of that need.
And that saves us money in the long run.
Correct.
And the, the rates right now are so historically low. I'm assuming then that these are going to be locked-in rates, they're not going to be.
Yeah, that's another good thing.
Yeah, they are locked.
Yeah.
So like my loan, if it drops again, my loans, when they come every so often, they actually get lowered.
Right, this would be locked in.
Right.
Yep.
It's not like a commercial loan that they can call it ahead of time.
And we can't pay it off, right?
Yeah, roughly, roughly, yeah.
You can pay off version with no penalty.
Yeah.
Right, which is huge because in most bonds, you can't redeem them without paying a huge penalty. So, and somebody asked a moment ago, what if we have money left over? As long as you can find, um, something to do with that money that falls within the scope of all your documentation, and that's why we drafted very broadly, you can use it. On the other hand, you can take it and just prepay your loan if you want to. So that's a nice thing about it.
So we're not obligated either way. We can make a decision if we get to that happy place.
And again, by the time you actually pass your bond resolution, which is where you seal in the dollar amount, you're going to be pretty close to knowing by then what you need. So your, your notice at the very beginning might seem high and it might go down, so.
So the biggest unknown is the galvanized to the houses, right? I mean, you don't know if there's ten of them or all of them.
Correct, correct, but that will not be covered by the USDA.
Ah, right.
They, they already made that very clearly. Not with them, had anything to do with that, they're not part of because of all the, I mean, it's, it's still kind of questionable on how things are going to go and all that, so.
But it's a significant checklist item that we've been promising to do. And it's minimal in any rate there impact. And we're not cutting any city services or putting them all in the budget somewhere else. We're taking thirty years to do something we promised to do, so. All right, any other questions for Jessica? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, where we at? Sunday marijuana.
Yep. Since that cafe opened last spring, it was believed, it was a belief mainly dictated by their operation type, was that Sunday operation types for adult-use marijuana facilities was 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. When Loom's special use permit was approved last spring, one of the conditions of approval was that their Sunday operation time was 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Loom has made a request to extend the su- Sunday closing time from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. They also referenced our ordinance and it states that facilities can operate from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily. I gave you a copy of section 2830 of our ordinance. With the development of a new ordinance, this is something that can be easily misunderstood and missed by all involved in dealing with this. I was under the assumption that the operation time on Sundays was 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. as well. This being said, we, we need to address this. We need to just decide, we want to just keep the operation time for 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily or make a special provision for Sunday sales. So Loom's request, really, they don't necessarily want to start earlier than 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock, but they'd like to go past 6:00, they'd like to go to 9:00 o'clock. And we got to treat everyone the same regardless. Um, and so there's, I'm, I'm probably going to have to fix some things with the special land use and planning commission as well, but, um, I need your direction on how you want to address this.
Didn't we just tell Metz Cafe no, just staying open late?
From, to, till 10:00 o'clock, from 9:00 to 10:00 o'clock.
Yeah, they want to go from 9:00 to 10:00.
Yeah. This will just go back to 9:00, like they are now.
It will now include Sunday.
Right.
And the reason we on planning commission pick three hours of operation was, is, one, you have a trailer park there, a mobile home park that has lots of children and you have lots of people outside all the time. You've got condos and you've got other things behind, and it's going to be all the way up.